Everyone. Attorney Fusco, is everyone present that you need at this point?
Yes, for this portion of the hearing, everyone's present.
Great. Okay, then I think we'll we'll get started. Good afternoon. My name is Anthony Casa Grande, and I'm the General Counsel for the Office of Health Strategy. This hearing is being convened for the limited purpose of hearing oral argument in docket number two zero dash three two three nine two dash C O N. The applicant in this matter, Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital of Danbury LLC, seeks to establish a forty-bed chronic disease hospital. As has been conveyed to counsel earlier, today has become a diff has become difficult due to conflicting priorities. Executive Director Gifford, the final decision maker in this matter, has been busy trying to testify at the state legislature at two different committees. However, state of Connecticut internet service services have not been functioning most of the day, which is complicating the process, making it difficult for her to be present at this hearing at this time. While testifying at the state legislature is important, so is proceeding with this oral argument, and OHS would like to accomplish both today if possible. So with agreement of counsel, I would like to presently adjourn this meeting until four thirty P M. today so that Dr. Gifford can attend and hear your presentation. If counsel will indicate their concurrence, we'll adjourn until four thirty P M.
This is Jennifer Fusco, counsel for Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital of Danbury, and we are in agreement with that plan. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Well, then we will presently adjourn until four thirty P M. Thanks again.
Thank you.
But I just want to make one. Okay, I just want to make one announcement before you start, Dr. Gifford. Wanted to let everyone know that the hearing is being recorded on Zoom and will be transcribed later. It's not being transcribed at this time. Okay, Dr. Gifford, so yours.
Thank you. And to our applicant, I want to just say thank you for your flexibility this afternoon. As you know, we had several circumstances beyond our control. One was a statewide I T outage, and the second was the scheduling of a couple of hearings that required my presence. So we very much appreciate your your flexibility on the scheduling this afternoon.
Absolutely understood. Thank you.
So this hearing is being convened for the limited purpose of hearing oral argument in docket number two zero three two three nine two dash C O N. The applicant in this matter, Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital of Danbury LLC, seeks to establish a forty-bed chronic disease hospital. On September twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, the hearing officer in this matter issued a proposed final decision denying the application. On October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, the applicant filed a brief and exceptions and requested an opportunity to present oral argument. On January thirty first, two thousand and twenty-three, the Office of Health Strategy issued a notice of oral argument for today. This hearing before the Office of Health Strategy is being held on February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Deidre Gifford. I'm the executive director of OHS, and I will be issuing the final decision in this matter. Also present on behalf of the agency is OHS General Counsel Anthony Casa Grande. Public Act number twenty-one dash two, section one forty-nine, as amended by Public Act number twenty-two dash three, authorizes an agency to hold a public hearing by means of an electronic equipment. In accordance with these acts, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his or her name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all those testifying mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them, all those testifying and listening. This hearing concerns only the applicant's oral argument regarding its brief and exceptions to the proposed final decision, and it will be conducted under the provisions of chapter fifty-four of the Connecticut general statutes. The certificate of need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. As you heard, this hearing will be transcribed and recorded, and the video will also be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to OHS are available for review through our electronic C O N portable, which is accessible on the OHS C O N web page. Although this hearing is open to the public, only the applicant and its representatives, and OHS and its representatives will be allowed to make comments accordingly. Accordingly, the chat feature of this Zoom call has been disabled. As this meeting is being held virtually, we ask that anyone speaking, to the extent possible, enable the use of video cameras when speaking during the proceedings. In addition, anyone who is not speaking shall mute their electronic device, including telephones, televisions, and other devices not being used to access the hearing. And lastly, as Zoom has notified you while entering this meeting, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time. However, please be advised that in such event, the hearing will be continued to a later date. We will now proceed. Counsel for the applicant, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, my name is Jennifer Fusco. I'm with the law firm of Uptick Kelly &amp; Spellicy, and I am counsel for Encompass Health Rehabilitation Hospital of Danbury.
Thank you. Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before we start?
I would just like, at Attorney Casa Grande's request, to note for the record that the PowerPoint you're viewing right now is one that was put together for purposes of guiding this oral argument, all of the substantive information, and it came directly from the record of this matter, and there's no new evidence contained in the presentation.
Thank you. You may begin whenever you're ready, Attorney Fusco.
Wonderful, and thank you again, Dr. Gifford, for making the time to be here with us today. I know it's been a challenging day for you schedule-wise and technology-wise, but here we all are. And before I start, I did want to take the time to introduce you to a few representatives of my clients who are here with me virtually. One is Carrie McCray. He's the Vice President and Associate General Counsel in Charge of State Regulatory Matters for Encompass Health. Another is Patrick Tour, Regional President for the Northeast Region of Encompass. Mr. Tour testified at the public hearing on matter on this matter. And the third is Marty Chafin of Chafin Consulting Group, who served as the applicant's expert witness in this matter. And she is here today. Obviously, I know this is an oral argument, but to answer any questions that you might have as we go along. We thank you for the opportunity to provide this argument in support of Encompass Danbury's C O N request. And I'd like to begin by expressing our appreciation for the time you and your staff have taken to review this proposal. While we disagree with the proposed final decision issued by Hearing Officer Novi, we have the utmost respect for her, for this agency, for the administrative process, which is why we're here today to try to give you, the final decision maker, a clear understanding of the substantial benefits of Encompass Danbury's proposal and how the statutory criteria for approval of a C O N have unequivocally been met. I think I think it's important to start that OHS understand exactly what Encompass is proposing to do here and why they're proposing to do it. Encompass Health is the nation's largest provider of inpatient rehabilitation services with more than one hundred and fifty hospitals located across the United States and Puerto Rico, and that includes ten facilities right here in New England, as you can see from that map. The company is looking to bring a much-needed, state-of-the-art inpatient rehabilitation hospital to Danbury, where beds of this type are extremely limited and an independent rehab facility of this scope and nature does not exist. The thirty-nine-million-dollar hospital, which will permanently employ more than one hundred clinical and support staff, will be constructed with Encompass Health dollars and without any request for economic incentives or assistance from the state of Connecticut. In other words, Encompass is offering to bring its resources and its unmatched clinical expertise to our state with no strings attached. This is why the proposal has received enthusiastic support from physicians, referral agency representatives, and elected officials, including the mayor of Danbury and the entire Danbury Legislative delegation. As you'll hear a bit later, Connecticut is ranked forty-eighth in the nation, almost last in our utilization of inpatient rehabilitation facility or IRF services, as they're known. And there's nothing unique about our population that explains why we don't use this critically important service at rates similar to the rest of the country. In fact, we have a large and growing Medicare population, which is the primary users of IRF services. The answer to why Connecticut's utilization is ranked this low is simple: we don't have enough IRF beds. Now, the people who need the services that Encompass proposes to provide have significant medical challenges. They need speech, occupational, and physical rehabilitation to treat the effects of strokes, spinal cord injuries, traumatic brain injuries, Parkinson's disease, and other debilitating conditions. They need the highest and most intensive level of inpatient rehab services provided at a state-of-the-art facility with specialized equipment, twenty-four-seven nursing care, and access to a variety of medical specialists on site. They need hours of therapy each day, not minutes of therapy each day, in order to have the best chance of a complete recovery. And they need care close to their homes so that their families can be actively involved in the rehabilitation process. But instead, because there aren't enough IRF beds in Connecticut, and specifically in the Danbury service area, many of these patients are receiving rehab care in suboptimal settings such as skilled nursing facilities. They're using home health care. They're traveling out of state for services, or they're foregoing needed treatment altogether. And these inequities will continue if the proposed Encompass hospital is not approved. How is this acceptable in the year two thousand and twenty-three in a state with the resources that Connecticut has and the collective healthcare knowledge and foresight of regulators such as yourselves? In the proposed final decision, OHS acknowledged that the proposal is in the best interest of patient care, that it will improve the quality and accessibility of IRF services for all patients, including Medicaid recipients and indigent persons, that it's both financially feasible and cost-effective, and that it improves the diversity of providers in the Danbury area, giving patients meaningful choice of providers as the C O N laws require. But at the same time, and kind of notwithstanding the tremendous benefits of the proposal that the hearing officer acknowledges, she inexplicably concludes that there's no need for the new hospital and that it will unnecessarily duplicate services provided by Danbury Hospital in a fourteen-bed rehab unit that's operating at capacity. And for these reasons alone, she's recommending denial of the C O N. The hearing officer's conclusions were driven largely by her refusal to consider the sound, well-reasoned, well-documented bed need methodology presented by the applicant, claiming that it wasn't an approved methodology. She was incorrect in concluding that the methodology needed to be approved to be considered by this agency. And she's also incorrect in concluding that the applicants failed to show need for the proposed facility. To the contrary, the evidence in the record demonstrates a need for nearly four times the number of IRF beds in the Danbury area than currently exists. As you undoubtedly know, the C O N application for a forty-bed inpatient rehab hospital is one of two presently pending before this agency filed by national rehab providers who separately recognized a significant need for this level of service in Connecticut. And I can assure you that neither provider would be before this agency requesting permission to build a multimillion-dollar hospital if they weren't confident in the need for the service. We're going to talk more today about the applicant's evidence and why the proposed proposed final decision we're here to challenge meets the statutory criteria for issuance of a C O N. But as important, we'll talk about how flawed this process has been and how the unlawful procedures upon which the C O N application was reviewed and decided provide the grounds for an administrative appeal. Hopefully, once you hear what we have to say, you'll agree that both the applicant and this proposal deserved a more fundamentally fair process than what was afforded to them. And again, once you've heard what we have to say, our hope and expectation is that you will right this wrong and either issue a final decision approving the proposed Encompass rehab hospital or come to the table to discuss a settlement that addresses any remaining concerns the agency has with the applicant's request. Because the evidence in the record is clear and convincing and unequivocally supports approval of this vitally important C O N. So moving on to the actual findings in the proposed final decision and the basis for the the hearing officer's denial. Like, as you can see from the slide in front of you, the statutory decision criteria that have been met far outweigh those that OHS claims have not been met. And you need to look at the totality of those criteria that have been met in deciding how to rule on this C O N. And this has been said in arguments and in C O N hearings before. OHS is required to take into consideration and make written findings regarding each of the statutory decision criteria. But based on the plain and unambiguous language of that statute, this agency is not required to find that each of these criteria has been satisfied as a precondition to C O N approval. Okay, now here you can see OHS determined that the applicant met the applicable decision criteria around financial feasibility, quality, access, cost effectiveness, diversity of providers, and patient choice. And the hearing officer also conceded in her findings that the proposal ensures access for Medicaid recipients and indigent persons. And if you consider the nature of the criteria that were met, the importance of these criteria on balance, OHS is compelled to find that the applicant carried its burden by a preponderance of the evidence and to approve the C O N. And as we'll discuss in a moment, our position is that the applicant, in fact, has met all of the statutory criteria for issuance of a C O N, including those around need, duplication of services, and state health planning goals and objectives, which means there's no reasonable basis on which to deny the C O N request. There's no question that the C O N should be approved and that Encompass Danbury should be allowed to establish an IRF in Danbury that will significantly significantly enhance the state's healthcare delivery system. Now, I'd also just like to take you briefly through several of the key criteria that the hearing officer claims were not met and explain why we sort of strongly disagree with her conclusions. And the first criteria are around utilization of existing facilities and unnecessary duplication of services. She claims that those two criteria have not been met and do not support approval of the Encompass hospital. This was based on her incorrect assumption that Danbury Hospital, which is the only other inpatient rehab provider in the service area, has available capacity. But that's not what the data shows. Danbury Hospital's own late filing, which you see summarized on your screen right now, shows that the rehab unit's average occupancy in two thousand and twenty-one was eighty-eight point one percent. That's well above the state health plan's eighty percent target occupancy, and it far exceeds the outdated seventy-four point one percent occupancy cited by the hearing officer in her final decision or proposed final decision. You can also see that Danbury's annual patient days, average daily census, and days above the unit's fourteen-bed capacity have increased materially over the past few years. And as hospital administrators testified, utilization will likely continue to increase as Danbury works to add referrals from its sister facility, Norwalk Hospital. The proposed Encompass hospital cannot unnecessarily duplicate the services of an existing provider if those services are at capacity, and that's what this data shows. Danbury Hospital's president and medical director of inpatient rehabilitation also testified that the hospital plans to expand its rehab unit in the immediate future. This is obviously at odds with their testimony that there's no need for additional beds in Western Connecticut. I'd say Danbury Hospital's motivation here has to be carefully scrutinized, given their conflicting positions. On the one hand, that there's no need for additional rehab beds, and on the other, that they themselves have plans to add those beds, plans that have progressed to the point of architectural drawings, millions in budgeted funds for the renovation, and sworn public testimony that the beds will be added in the near future. I'd say these actions taken by the hospital confirm that there's, in fact, a great need for additional IRF capacity in the Danbury area, and Encompass is here, ready, willing, and able to meet that need. Of equal importance, when we're talking about utilization of existing providers, Encompass is a cost-effective provider of inpatient rehab services. As the evidence in the record shows and as acknowledged by the hearing officer, the positive impact of a freestanding IRF to complement Danbury Hospital's rehab unit must be considered by OHS in discharging its obligation to ensure lower-cost care for relevant patient populations and the cost-effectiveness of healthcare delivery in the region. The hearing officer's conclusions around clear public need are also clearly erroneous. She concluded that the applicant has not shown a need for the proposed inpatient rehab hospital because the national population-based need methodology advanced by our expert witness is not quote-unquote "approved" for use in Connecticut and does not accurately reflect Connecticut residents and their need for IRF services. We respectfully disagree with both of these conclusions. Without, you know, recreating hundreds of pages of evidence and hours of expert testimony by Ms. Chafin, I'd like to take you briefly through the process undertaken and the summary conclusions from her analysis. As I mentioned at the outset, Ms. Chafin is here today and available to answer any questions that you have. And given her extensive experiences described in her curriculum vitae, including the analysis and preparation of successful C O N applications in many states and internationally when she worked to establish a C O N framework for a Middle Eastern country, I think her opinion should be given substantial weight. So just to briefly summarize, first, the applicant conducted a market assessment by having discussions with community physicians and referral agency representatives who identified the need for additional IRF services in Danbury. Much was made at the hearing about the fact that Encompass is based out of state, but I can assure you that work was done on the ground here in Connecticut in their northeast region to ensure that there was a need for these services, and you can find many letters of support and public comments to this effect in the record. Ms. Chafin then quantified the need for IRF beds, or the gap in care, as it was called, in her expert report and at the hearing, using national benchmarks applied to service area populations. And I do urge you to read Ms. Chafin's written testimony and listen to her presentation and responses to questions at the hearing, which provides substantially more detail than we have time to go into today, but I but I will go through a few key findings in a moment. And as we look at Ms. Chafin's analysis, I would also ask you to keep in mind the following statistics, which come directly from her hearing testimony and provide an important foundation for her opinion. First, as I mentioned at the outset, Connecticut is ranked forty-eighth nationally in two thousand and nineteen in terms of IRF conversion rates, with only one point six four percent of Medicare fee-for-service patients discharged to IRF, compared with a U.S. average of four point two two percent. That gap then increased in two thousand and twenty, as the national average grew to four point five five percent, and Connecticut's rate remained virtually flat. Looking at another metric, Connecticut ranked forty-third nationally in two thousand and nineteen in terms of IRF discharges per one thousand Medicare fee-for-service patients with just five discharges. That's forty-five percent of the national average. But then we ranked first in the nation in terms of discharges from SNPs at ninety-two, or one hundred and forty-eight point four percent of the national average. And home health discharges were also above the national average at one twenty-eight point two percent. And notably, while there's a significant disparity between Connecticut residents and the nation's use of post-acute care services, that same disparity, as you can see from this chart, does not exist for general acute care services. It follows, then, that many patients in Connecticut are not getting the highest and most intensive level of rehab care needed to give them the best chance of a complete recovery. This is why it's also completely illogical to use historical utilization as a measure of current need when utilization of a service is amongst the lowest in the nation. This will inevitably inevitably lead to an underestimate of need and the false presumption that there are enough IRF beds, when in fact, many people who would benefit from this level of service are not receiving the care they need. The need for IRF services cannot ever be accurately assessed unless you're open to the possibility of looking at things differently, of challenging the status quo, so to speak. And again, without getting into a level of detail that can be found in the written record and Ms. Chafin's testimony, she arrived at the number of beds needed in Western Connecticut by analyzing publicly available data. This this is all publicly available and was verified by the analysts after the hearing process. And it yielded a need for a total of sixty-two IRF beds at eighty percent occupancy. So even considering the fourteen beds that already operate at Danbury Hospital, there's still a need for an additional forty-eight IRF beds in the service area. This methodology that Ms. Chafin used was not a national methodology that failed to consider relevant information about Connecticut residents and their need for IRF services, which is what the hearing officer says it was. To the contrary, it considered the size and aging of the Connecticut service area population, as well as their use of general acute and post-acute care services. It's also important to note, as I just said, that all of these findings are based on publicly available data, and they are entirely consistent with the experience of area physicians and community agencies, which we understand from the market research done at the outset. The needs assessment is clear, it's concise, and it's supported by evidence. But still, the hearing officer incorrectly concluded that the methodology I just described to you had to be approved in order to be considered by OHS. There is no such requirement in law or OHS practice. And even if there was, the methodology being advanced is one that has been approved by virtue of this agency's approval of many other C O N applications using similar methods of analysis. Examples are laid out, you know, in detail in our brief, but they include national and regional behavioral health providers who establish clear public need for services and facilities in Connecticut in the exact same way that we did. Now, we understand that the applicant bears the burden of proving that there's a clear public need for its proposal, but there are a number of acceptable ways to do this. Applicants will often use the statewide healthcare facilities and services plans guidelines to assist in evaluating the need for the proposal, but these guidelines are not approved methodologies either. The plan by its design is an advisory document, and the guidelines do not have the force of law unless and until they're formally adopted as regulations. And even if the plan guidelines were legally binding, none of those guidelines address bed need methodologies for freestanding inpatient rehab facilities, which opens up the applicant to determine need in any way that they deem appropriate, which is what we've done using publicly available evidence. OHS has the flexibility to apply a population-based need methodology based on national benchmarks to determine clear public need for a service in Connecticut. And you've shown a willingness to analyze C O Ns in this matter before. So why is OHS now saying that this type of methodology isn't approved in the context of the applicant's C O N request? You know, rules need to be applied in a fair and consistent manner, and it's arbitrary and capricious and an unwarranted exercise of the agency's discretion to consider Encompass's request under different standards than similarly situated providers. And finally, I'd like to touch on the procedural errors and irregularities in this matter, which I alluded to in my introduction. First, the agency's decision to redesignate a hearing officer on two separate occasions. Once was between the public hearing and the closure of the record, and then again, just twenty days before a proposed final decision was issued. The third redesignated hearing officer, who was just weeks into her tenure with the agency when she issued the proposed decision, did not observe the hearing in person in real time, did not have an opportunity to assess witness credibility, to ask clarifying questions, to request additional evidence, and to and to use that information to issue a proposed decision that accurately and completely reflects the law and information in the administrative record. So the result is a decision that's just replete with errors and omissions, both legal and factual. It's based on selective evidence, and it takes positions on matters of policy that are contrary to the manner in which this agency has decided many other applications. Also, as you can see from the timeline up there, this has been a two-and-a-half-year C O N process. The certificate of need was filed on August fourth, two thousand and twenty, and it has been plagued by repeated delays in scheduling and holding a public hearing, in closing the public hearing, in issuing a decision, and even in trying to get this brief oral argument scheduled. As you know, or I hope you know, from a letter that was submitted several weeks ago asking to move this argument forward, this has resulted in substantial prejudice to the applicant, including two hundred thousand dollars spent on options to secure real property, which it now risks losing. And this is the kind of unnecessary spending that's contrary to the goals and objectives of this agency around healthcare cost containment, and it's exactly what the C O N laws are intended to prevent. So just together, these procedural errors have denied the applicant of their right to a prompt and fair hearing, to a timely decision based on the administrative record, and they are due process violations that form grounds for an administrative appeal. Now, when making her recommendation that the C O N be denied, the hearing officer ignored the better evidence in the record showing that all relevant decision criteria have been met and that approval of the application is in the best interest of patients. As set forth in our briefs and exceptions, the reliable, probative, and substantial evidence in the administrative record unequivocally supports approval of the proposal and does not support the hearing officer's recommended denial. Therefore, approval is the only reasonable path for this agency to take. In closing, please ask yourself how you would feel if a family member or a loved one suffered a stroke or was paralyzed in an accident and was unable to get the transformative care that Encompass proposes to offer to the residents of this state. Everyone deserves access to the level of care needed to ensure that they have the best possible chance of making a complete recovery. That's why Encompass wants to build this hospital, and that's why you, Dr. Gifford, should approve it. I thank you for your time today, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that presentation. If you wouldn't mind, I we would ideally be in the same room, Attorney Casa Grande and myself, but I do have a question for him, so I'm just going to ask that we both go on mute and turn off our cameras so we can confer briefly before we conclude.
Absolutely, that's fine. Thank you. Absolutely, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you for indulging us. So I do have one just clarifying question, if I could, and that is on your slide ten, which is your discussion of the bed, I believe, the bed need calculation.
Yes, correct.
And it's line four, which is the target IRF discharge rate per thousand beneficiaries. You stated that the information here was based on publicly available information. And I believe that you were asked during the hearing about the origin of this number thirteen as the target discharge rate. Could you just re-answer the question, please, as to where this number thirteen is derived from?
And are you okay with having Marty Chafin answer that? She's the one who put together the needs assessment, so I would ask if she can do that. Marty, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. The thirteen is from the same database in terms of the CMS information that provides every state's discharge rate per thousand Medicare fee-for-service beneficiaries. And so that thirteen is the seventy-fifth percentile of a ranking of the fifty states versus Puerto Rico.
Okay, that answers my question. I had not picked up on the seventy-fifth percentile piece, so thank you very much. And with that, I want to thank you very much for your presentation and for attending today. And as you know, I will issue a final decision on this matter in accordance with chapter fifty-four of the general statutes. Thank you very much again for your patience in the scheduling this afternoon and for the information that you conveyed.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a good day. Take care.
Bye.